The delegation?
No.
The process is still in access.
We're trying to legislate the delegation.
Call this December eighteenth, two thousand thirteen work session.
Yes, Mayor James Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rebecca Lee, District one. Here. Councilmember Jim Iard, District two.
Here.
Councilmember Bates Madison, District three.
Here.
Councilmember Jen Devia, District four.
Present.
We're all present.
All right. Looking at our bars.
Yeah. That's great.
Two dollars. What is our package schedule?
Yes, at our previous retreat, we talked a little bit about some of the legislative matters that we would like to present to the delegation and I'd ask you all to keep in mind and be open to, one, having a work session for discussion of what our legislative package would be and that the session opens January the thirteenth and I was hoping that the first week in January after we're back after the holiday that we could then schedule a meeting with our delegation to discuss with them our intent to submit legislation. When we do that, there is a transmittal resolution that you prepare so we'll do that for the first meeting in January as to the transmission of local legislation to our delegation. So today's, purpose of today's meeting is to talk about some of those items that could be in that package and some of you have mentioned some ideas and I have some things down too. And I will say that in just a short order, as we talk about, we normally go into an executive session on a matter of real estate, but the first thing that was talked about was that I brought up is creating a recreation authority and that does require going through the general assembly for purposes of using hotel motel tax. We can raise our hotel motel tax up to eight percent and right now DeKalb County did that last, last session, talked with some of the hotels, not all of them, as to raising that and that again would be, excuse me, that additional three pennies would be used to fund the recreation authority in a couple of ways. One, it would enable them to go out by land and have it developed for parks and recreation.
Can they use the five percent now?
Pardon me?
Can they use the five percent?
No, not to, not to buy the, the five percent, sixty percent of that goes into the general fund and forty percent remains with the city for tourism. So there's some, you could augment it and supplement part of that forty percent for conference.
But tourism or the recreation authority have control over that?
No, no, it would just be three additional pennies.
So the recreation authority, it can't, it won't have any use if it doesn't have a three percent tax increase on it?
Well, you could create a recreation authority, but they'd have no stream of revenue. They would be like a development authority and there really wouldn't be a need for a recreation authority because you have a development authority that could induce a developer to build a conference center. This is talking about building parks, so the recreation authority buy land.
So we got to decide if we want to raise the tax or do we?
Correct, this is, this would be the means and the other part of that is the recreation authority can also cover the funds for employees so it could, the parks and rent directly could be funded out of that three percent.
Do we know roughly what that number is based on for collections?
We're at, let's see, probably another three hundred thousand because we're a little over a million. About four hundred, five hundred thousand comes to us on tourism, six hundred about. I'm giving you an exact number in just a minute because we had that in our budget, so three percent more on top of the total, but I think it's about three hundred thousand.
All right, well, um, what is the, I'm opposed to raising the hotel motel tax, but I need to hear from y'all what.
Well, my, my take is it is somewhat of a backdoor tax, but it's not a tax levy on our citizens. It's really a tax. It comes to, it's out of town, it's a hotel motel.
Presumably.
Presumably.
Unless it's in the doghouse.
Unless, unless.
We're doing a segregation.
A segregation, there you go.
But I think that in concept it, it has some appeal because you, you are enticing, you're creating a incentive for tourism to come into Brookhaven by having the ability to fund.
By raising the hotel.
Well, you're having them fund the attractiveness of our area. So I'm in theory not really opposed to it, I just think it'd be, it may be better to have an actual concrete plan, like this is what we're going to do with this money before we lower the tax, you know.
I would like to know what's going on regionally, so we know what's happening.
Yes, we're collecting that for you all.
It would be very important and a deciding factor. I think one of the complaints from the hotel motel industry now is that they're not really gaining a whole lot from the city of Brookhaven in the form of support. So, and I know we're trying several programs, I'm not sure that their perception of it is really the do all for what they're looking for. So if we did come up with a concrete plan as base, very appropriately referred to, that would show how this money could be used to make the city more attractive, which in the end would actually help their business, I think that would be really key.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they want it, it should come from the hotel motel industry, they should have a letter or petition, a petition or something saying we want this.
Yeah, I mean, I think just like a, you know, just like we want to ensure we have a seat at the table of murder, I think hotel motel people would want to have a seat at the table.
Well, I'm happy to make the call.
What are you going to do?
I would highly suggest we have a.
I'll definitely, I'll definitely do that.
Could this money be used, you've mentioned purchase of land, what else can they, can they be used for? In other words, can they be used to support events and those types of things or what, how could those funds be?
They're principally a builder and they would house the employees for the parks and recreation.
Just more capital.
It is.
Fund.
It is.
To the general revenue.
Correct, and what's so nice about that is when you're doing a bond inducement, you have a pledge of, you can pledge that revenue stream to the, to service the debt and then the secondary pledge would be the general fund. So, you know, it really helps when, when you're doing something like, because what you need to remember is Brookhaven, unlike the majority of the cities in, in Georgia, has a cap on the millage rate. So that's going to hurt you at some point in time when you go for a bond rating because you have no means, if there's a default, to raise taxes to cover the, the debt and service the debt.
We have, yeah, we have a two point eight five right now. Well, you have means to raise taxes, but it's not by the cap.
Correct. Or can you say it beyond the cap? Oh, it's the cap.
Right, beyond the cap.
And the cap, it hurts.
The other cities don't have limits.
It does, it's a negative. So you do, you still have that free board between what you have now and going to your max, but even so, one, it takes an action by the council to raise the millage and we don't know what a future council may or may not do. They may raise it, they may go for a charter amendment and say they want to get rid of that, I don't know.
I think the only city that's been affected by that is, is it not John's Creek, not the ones that were affected by that, because their cap was different.
Their cap, so is Milton.
Well, they all have a cap, I think the one we've heard about maybe affecting the bond rate was the, was the John's Creek. I don't think Sandy Springs bond rate is, is hurt or done with that, just the principle of the cap. People do say that, oh, it hurts your bond rate, or, so in some cases it can, but I think the cap is a good thing for whoever controls the growth and expansion of government.
Well, that's your philosophy, I mean, I'm bringing this up, you know, to determine if this is something you want to explore, if not, there's, you know, we can support it by the general fund, we can support it by, you know, trying to bring in a developer that might want to do a conference center or sports arena, something like that. What this enables you to do is, is to buy it and build it. But again, that's, you know, that's how you all, depending on how you all feel, if that's something you want to entertain now or you want to wait, it's something that's available to if you wish.
The mechanic wants to build his pass establishment, the rec authority, does the eight percent start then or can we elect to start it at some point in the future once that legislation is in place to create a? We can have a rec authority to fund it when we want to. Yeah. It doesn't have to come with a.
Correct, that's what I was saying earlier, you can still have a recreation authority. I don't really see the necessity of it when you have a development authority.
I'm just taking, yeah, you know, just taking along the lines of, we go ahead and get it in this legislative session, but we may not pull the trigger until later.
Correct, yeah.
Ie after we do a master plan.
You have the ability, yes, you can absolutely do that.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Yeah, you can absolutely.
It's out of that.
Correct, yeah.
Does the, does the amount that's accrued from this three percent, can that accumulate over several years or does it spend every year?
Well, you can, I'm not mistaken that way and I will give a firm answer, but my sense is yes, it can accrue because you're trying to build funds to be able to, you do it either way, you can build funds and hold, you know, keep saving, saving, saving until there's enough money to do something with it or the real reason for it is you use this and you can pledge it to retire and service debt.
I would tell you I'm very much in favor of this. I mean, I think all we have to do is look at what the recreation authority role has been in both the building of the Falcon Stadium and the Braves Stadium. You know, this is their mechanism by which you can, you can create huge economic development projects without tapping into your general fund, which is, which is directly into your pockets or your tax numbers. I would like to know absolutely for sure what our surrounding municipal is doing, but, but, so it is correct that the cap raised at this last stadium?
They do.
Okay, so all of the cab, we know that Atlanta.
Right.
Has it up, so our neighbors to the east in Buckhead certainly have it and that's right across the line. I'm quite sure that Sandy Springs raised theirs, doesn't what he has not, I can guarantee that. So whether, are there even many hotels in Shoreham, I don't know.
A few, extended stay.
Okay, well, do we really compete with them? So, you know, for three dollars at most a night, that a tourist might be paying for a hundred dollar room.
Is it three percent and three dollars per?
It's three percent.
Three dollars per hundred?
We have, we have, we have one hundred dollars.
Yeah, but if you take, I mean, look, a lot of hotels are sixty nine, so, you know, what is a Red Roof Inn, probably thirty four, you know? I mean, all of ours are not high end hotels.
But you've got, well, you've got, you have the Marriott, the Marriott has been, or the, whatever.
The Hyatt. If we talked to them the other day when we toured the Hyatt and we asked them their thoughts on raising the hotel motel tax and they said fine.
I thought they said we'd get back to you.
No, they said fine.
The construction guys were supposed to ask us, to tell us what they.
Give it the seven, well, I mean, we can get back to them, but I feel quite certain, look, when you're, when you're going to charge whatever prices they're going to charge, three dollars more on a hundred.
Well, I agree, I agree with you Rebecca, I, from my, my feedback from the, from that industry has been that it's not a decision factor on, on meetings coming to them or, or, or their booking people.
I would be shocked if anybody, when they reserve a room says, now what is your hotel motel tax or what are your taxes? When you, when you book hotels dot com or even call, you know, the main reservation line, you're looking for the bottom line, how much is it a night?
Yeah.
You know, I think we have an opportunity to do some really great things and, and I hope that we are thinking big, that we have big visions, I think that's what's going to distinguish us. I, you know, I've wanted from the beginning for us to explore the idea of a sports complex, which I think will bring in tons of, if you've ever had a child in any kind of travel sport, which I've had several, holy cow, you know, you will spend so much money on the road and in hotels and you will fill these hotels on the weekends when they are begging, begging for visitors. And when we've talked to this initially with Jim Bicata and people like that who also has a travel partner, he immediately understood the value of this. So why not start, you know, accruing this now? Again, we don't, we don't have to spend it immediately, but I would like us to think big and, and do some exciting projects that are going to really generate some, some true economic development in, in our city. I mean, if we want to do this Buford Highway renovation, we got to do more than just paint and change the signs.
Even the linear parks that we were talking about, you know.
Right.
Cost money to build sidewalks and sidewalks.
Absolutely, I mean, I think it could go to that too, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Yes. You could use it for that.
Obviously, I don't, I don't want to try to be the stick in the mud, you know, I'm not going to go to battle, I mean, y'all go on this obviously, on the.
I'll maybe have to break the tie.
On the record, yeah, for the tie, it definitely will break. The rec authority, I think that's something we can all get behind it and have it out there in case we, that does happen, so I think it's more exciting not to have that legislative package. My thought on this, when, you know, when we're comparing surrounding jurisdictions, the two you cited, City of Atlanta and DeKalb, I'm not sure those are examples we'd like to follow.
Well, as seen with Atlanta is the Buckhead District, which is the main convention tourism center, I mean, those are all high end hotels.
And downtown, you know.
And downtown.
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't need to, I think we need to differentiate what it is we're looking at, we're looking at hotel competition, not, not city competition, I think, as Rebecca said, those are the high end hotels, that is where the, the majority of the convention, you know, with, with what goes through the, the world congress center on a yearly basis, I mean, it's, it's huge.
Right, and so, I was going to finish my statement, is, is that, it's easy to say, well, it's just three, three dollars out of a hundred or whatever it is, it's out of somebody else's pocket, that's, that's money that government is taking from us to want to do the great things that we want to do, but in my mind, at least initially, I mean, we want to do some great things, I think we've got some, we've got a parks budget that's pretty big next year and in my mind, I have big visions for what we already have with the revenue that we have and off, you know, with a year after creation, putting in a three percent increase, a tax increase, even though it won't necessarily be on all of our citizens, some of our citizens have been made, they may use hotels, I don't know. But it's easy for government to say, it's just three percent, it's just three dollars and you're taking it out of somebody else's pocket that was their money, now it's the government's money. To me, I'm philosophically opposed to it, so when this comes up and I make that statement, I'm not going to keep going on wrong, but don't hold it against me saying, well, look, it's easy for you to say that, I'm telling you now that I'm opposed to it so that later on it's not grandstanding.
I'd like to ask a question here. What are the other possible methods of funding recreational authority if it's not through this increased tax?
It would be, well, let me just be sure you all understand what I said, but just increase the tax enables you to create an authority whereby that revenue that's generated can be used to service debt and to build projects, that's, that's its sole purpose. By doing that, it enables you to do more in your, in your parks and be more creative.
Well, but my point is if someone's going to be behind creating the authority but opposed to the tax, I mean, is there really an option? What is the other, what is the other term?
Well, the other option is you could try and find a developer that you could convince to invest money to build a conference center and a sports arena and have the development authority induce that bond. The difference is you don't have to go out and seek somebody, you're the, the applicant, you're saying, this is what we want to do, this is allowing us to expand our, our parks. It also enables you to be the builder, that you're buying land for the sole purpose of, and I'll use the conference center again, and what you could do is you could be the builder of that, you could contract with an operator, you could go to a Marriott or a Hyatt or whoever it might be, they could be the operator of the hotel for the, the recreation authority. The other thing that it allows is it allows the, when the recreation authority is created, to employ staff. That relieves the burden of your general fund to pay for staff. Last night you approved a budget with a recreation director and four staff members, whether they're employees or they're vendors, they're, they're, the revenue stream dedicated to pay for that is your general fund. All of that could be taken out and could be housed under the recreation authority of this three percent. So it relieves the burden.
Maybe the recreation authority accrue any revenue created by a conference center, rental rates.
Absolutely.
So it can be a money, a money generating.
Correct.
So not unlike the stadiums where, you know, part of, if you followed the Braves thing, they were sort of at odds with the Fulton County Recreation Authority, which was controlling everything and they wanted more power and more leverage to do things and they wanted more, you know, whatever.
Well, like the lease rates, you know, like at the Falcon Stadium.
Right.
That's the rec authority.
Right.
You're leasing, just like at the airport, you, you lease that space for those shops to the airport authority, the airport authority is, is granting those leases, so that revenue stream goes back into the authority and what it is, it just turns, the money comes in, it pays for the staff and it builds the projects, it improves the projects, it maintains the projects. So coupled with the general fund dedication, right now we have two million, two, two point one five million dedicated for capital improvements, plus what you could generate through the hotel motel tax, you've got quite a, quite a bit of opportunity for a funding pool there.
So you're going to give us surrounding jurisdictions rates, so like if Atlanta is twelve percent?
No, if eight percent is the maximum, the law says it's eight.
That's the max, anywhere in state.
Anywhere.
Okay. What if we reduced it?
Pardon me?
What if, you was, what if maybe ours three percent, that's a six dollar savings to people, we survived on that.
That's going to fill rooms at the Red Roof Inn.
Well, my, the, my, yeah, my last point on it is that.
I love the red again, you just got to stop all those profit.
I, I believe that until I saw a project this, I, I'm hesitant to pull the trigger on the additional increase, I think that having participation from the hotel board would be.
Yeah, and I would definitely do that. Yeah, and I would like it.
Travelers.
I do think we ought, I agree, we need to give them a voice at the table and hear what they have to say.
Sure.
I mean, if they're all adamantly against it, I'll, I'll be glad to go off, but I.
Is there a traveling salesmen's association?
But one, one more point, one more point on it, just want to finish up, like, it's just saying that I, I, unless, basically I'm opposed to using that fund for operational parks directors, unless there's a direct benefit to the hotel motel people, to the tourism industry, so.
So the vet planner could turn out of there and not a parks director?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just think that, that is, that's shifting the burden to people who aren't particularly going to benefit from our operational activities on the park side. I can understand how it's a burden on the general fund, but it is really to be the benefit of, of our citizens. Not completely opposed to it because I think that if sports complex needs a person in there to, to run it, then, then, that their, their salary could potentially come out of that, but I think the right way to do it is pull the trigger on enacting it, but we don't pull the trigger on, on the tax until we've identified these projects and get participation from the board.
Now, the movement to increase it, does not, that's not legislative, it's, it's our decision as a city.
No, we have to go to the general assembly.
To increase the hotel motel tax.
Oh, yeah, they have to pass it. Don't you remember in, in twelve, Mike and the boys held up the caps?
You do not have to do it to create the authority.
But, but if we create the authority this year and then we decide we want to do it, we have to wait, we don't do it this legislative session, it has to go to two thousand.
You can still create an authority anytime you want to, but you don't want to keep creating authorities for, just to create an authority because the development authority can do some things and maybe an urban redevelopment agency can do some things, but if you are wanting to tie, if you're wanting to increase your hotel motel tax, the benefit of that is the ability to create a recreation authority that can buy land, build parks and, and that's their, their responsibility. So you could move forward to transmit the request for the legislation, the local legislation to allow for the increase of the hotel motel tax and then get that approved, signed off and then wait and decide when you want to pull the trigger to, to do that. You may want to wait till two thousand fifteen.
So it's like the, like a referendum, the right to vote on it, so it's an option of transmitting of the increases?
My only reason for bringing this up.
In favor?
I think we need to think of innovative ways to build your parks and really do more on tourism, I mean, you don't have a Stone Mountain here, you don't have a Six Flags here, but we do have a need, and there's a pent up need for more sports fields and we need to think smartly about that and, and take advantage of that resource and say, okay, well, it can certainly be programmed for citizens, but why can't Brookhaven be the capital of the Little League tournament play or why can't, like Kansas City or wherever they go out for the national championship?
Or soccer.
That's, I was just going to mention that, soccer.
Volleyball.
Boxing.
And, and I'm, I'm looking for tools to help enable redevelopment opportunities on Buford Highway.
H five.
Right now, right now Buford Highway has nothing to offer, it just doesn't, but it is supreme an opportunity.
For sports.
For sports or for anything.
Fantastic location.
Unless, you know, we're right off of eighty five, there's no reason why, you know.
Just trying to stop the lips closing, Brookhaven, Buford Highway has nothing to offer.
Well, you know, if you look at what Buford Highway really is, I mean, by name, it's called, it's called Buford Highway because it was the link from Buford to Atlanta.
Correct.
And the development of it was never really, really, I think, well planted, it's whatever happened.
Well, it did, it just, it just evolved over time, but there are, Buford Highway is really your only area in this city that has an opportunity for redevelopment. District one is pretty much set, you've got the PCID up there and the predominance of development there is, is residential and, you know, the other districts are primarily residential as well, but Buford Highway has the, the opportunity to be the southern anchor for employment, for recreation and certainly for tourism and, and convention trade. It has the access, it has the, the view shed and it has the, the front door that, that you're looking for.
You know, the thing that, that I would just bring up is that if in fact it's, say, three hundred thousand a year, maybe more, especially if we have more hotels online, I, I would really like us to start accruing that money, I mean, every year that we wait, you know, it's, it's a lost opportunity.
Exactly.
You know, again, let, let's think about some big projects, if you look at like what Columbus, Georgia did, which is opening up that section of the Chattahoochee through downtown and then turning it into a whitewater rapids, I just saw in the paper the other day, sixteen thousand people went down those rapids, double the expectation, and now they're adding the zip line over it because they want to have more things because it's drawing so many people, wildly successful. I don't think we can do rapids yet down the.
No, we can zip over the Beechtree Creek.
But, but we could do a zip line down there, we could do, you know, contracting, we can, you know.
Let me, if I'm interested, having familiar with this, particularly down South Georgia, about Austin, they went through the same type of analysis, they created a recreational authority, also has a, have a tourism authority which manages the convention center, but in recreation, they saw the foresight to take either old land, old parks and then convert it to softball fields and tennis courts and they actually now go out and recruit groups to come in for softball tournaments, tennis, and now they're looking, they're looking at soccer, the, the issue with soccer is it takes a lot more land with that, but it has been a very, it's been, it's been very, you know, where you take the South Georgia community that has no draw, it, it actually have worked.
I always want to make sure with Megan or anywhere else that we, when this, if this gets transmitted, that people understand that this gives us a recreational authority with the option of that hotel motel tax so the citizens have enough time to consider and learn about it, know what it's about, so when this gets transmitted, I don't know if it'll be a story then or if it'll be a story when it passes, if it passes, or whatnot, so.
Well, I, I think the opportunity, is you tie that with our Parks Master Plan and this is, this is an opportunity, once we do the Parks Master Plan, if we start seeing some of the big picture, some of the, some of the big items, this is an opportunity to, to fund some of those, so tie the two together, you have a long-term vision, funding source and that we're not pulling the trigger on it at this point, then, you know, I, I think if we, because we don't have to pull the trigger, because it's not an incident, then I think if, we need to go ahead and do it this year and have that opportunity available, once we figure out, once, Parks Director comes on board, once we get the master plan done, you know, by third quarter of this year, we should have a pretty good idea of what, what sort of monies we're going to be looking at to create some of these things. I agree, I, I just think, I'm, I'm in favor and however procedurally we can do it, so that we pull the trigger on this thing legislatively this year.
Are we talking about the recreation authority or hotel motel?
I think they both have to go together.
It really is the three percent increase and then, but I'm opposed to.
It's up to the right to vote on a three percent increase.
Yeah, I'm opposed to going ahead and accruing the money until we have a plan because it's, it is the perception of.
We'd have to do the increase first anyway.
So we, well, once they grant it by the legislature, we then. So we, once they grant it by the legislature, we then, we're going to implement it, correct? Okay, so that's still...
So it lays down on the total...
But don't forget, please, in your thinking and deliberation about this, while it has a recreation focus, please don't forget about, we're looking for all opportunities for Beaufort Highway, once its highest and best use.
That's right.
It's more than just employment-based and residential, we're looking for, you know, opportunities for parks and recreation development. While that's gonna be captured in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, your Beaufort Highway Improvement Plan and Economic Development Strategy is going to include that.
Yeah.
So all I'm looking for too is, what tools can we have on the shelf, ready to go when you're ready to go? And you're not waiting another year because you're ready, but now you can do nothing.
It's a good tool, and I just think that it's important to have that buy-in from the citizens and the hotel motel people with a plan of what are we gonna do with this money? Because just saying, we as a government know how to spend your money better than you do, is bad, is a bad thing. That's where, I think that, that's where having that definitive plan of this is what we're gonna do with this money is important before we start charging people.
Right, right.
Well, the plan, the plan's gonna be developed by the authority, which you are not looking members of.
Correct.
But the part...
They'll use the Park and Rep Plan and the Beaufort Highway Plan.
Yeah. Parks Master Plan should...
Kind of big guy, we'll make sure to do it when we can.
And the Collin Plan and Beaufort Highway, they're all put together to lead into this.
Can they appoint themselves? I guess if they...
I guess they could, or they could appoint, you know, maybe one member, or at least have a council member as an ex officio.
Sure, but if you're gonna be, you know, under the Authorities Act, or at least one member's or appointed ex officio.
Yeah.
But you really want, I mean, if you're gonna, if you're taking it from tourism, you know, from motel industry, you probably would want somebody in that industry on your block.
Absolutely.
Is it, would it be possible to poll our, our hoteliers in time of this legislation?
Well, yeah, I'll definitely get the plan.
I mean, if we, if we could do that, I think that would be a powerful voice, I mean, if it's up or down, you know, just to say either that they're in favor of it, or, I mean, if they're not, then maybe we do that, but, you know, I wanna hear from them too.
Okay.
I can't imagine a lot of them.
So the strategies I hear is to submit for the recreational authority, put in for the eight percent, and then hold it until we pull the trigger on it, to do a regional analysis...
With communications, making sure that people are not voting, we're not transmitting, we're not transmitting a tax increase of legislature.
I think what we wanna be careful of is...
That would be important. So then we do a regional analysis, meet with the hoteliers, get a consensus, and make sure one of them is on the recreational authority. I have a question, just for clarification purposes. If for some reason the portion of the funds, or the salary expenses for the parks people were to be transitioned over to this, do you know what dollar amount that would equate to approximately?
Yes.
It's in the budget?
It's about, I'm going back from my mind on that, probably around four hundred thousand.
A year? Okay, well, we would already talked yet.
And it doesn't have to be all of them either.
Right, well, I mean, at eight, going to eight percent, we've just estimated it's a three hundred thousand dollars, so that's already a hundred percent over, so that probably gonna be a good mix.
Well, that's something too, now, it enables you to do that. I'm not saying you wanna do that, start day one, I don't think you do, because I think you want to have the recreation authority involved in, you know, building these special areas, and, and look at what the revenue stream of these improvements can bring on, and looking at that money and saying, okay, well, can some of that money feed the engine of the staff? Well, if this grows like, I think it has the ability to grow, definitely an events planner, we had that already in the Parks and Rep budget. But also, you know, we'll probably want somebody that would be some kind of sports coordinator for the tournament play, and would be recruiting and soliciting for those different types of sports activities to come, because...
Or competing with ESPN.
Exactly.
But that's...
Right, but it's very competitive, you know, I mean, you go out and you are promoting your city for these large tournaments to come to the city.
Yeah, you don't sit there and wait for them.
Right.
Go out and you promote them, market them.
I think we're in consensus, let's go ahead and put it on the list, and let's move on to the next item. I think we can get into discussions about how, where, what.
Okay, next items, tournaments.
Well, Bates just went...
He just, okay.
Can you go to the next one?
Yes, we can go to the next one. Tax allocation district, and this requires a local legislation and a referendum.
Do we establish that as part of local, do we have to, do we have to have a specific area?
Yes, you do, you have to have a chief draft area.
So we define the area that...
And it has to be, you know, it's been, it's either blighted or slow to develop or underdeveloped, again, another tool for Beaufort Highway, for sure. And again, this, first and foremost, this is, I'm not advocating at all that this is a TAD for the entire city, I'm talking about very specific areas where you draw to recruit and develop and improve.
So what would we ask for this session?
This is just the, it would ask permission to the authority to hold a referendum.
What is, what is the benefit and what is the cost to the city for a tax allocation district?
Well, the cost is the cost of the election, and the benefits would be to use it as a promotional tool, to get the right developers in to build the project that you're wanting for Beaufort Highway. Again, it's another important tool, and I'm really looking at the Beaufort Highway corridors, you know, we're trying to bring in pioneers that will locate...
So a tax allocation...
I've done this, I've done this.
Can you just give everybody an overview of what a TAD has to do with?
Yeah, just what a TAD, what a TAD does is it enables you to, you're gonna, and you also have to deal with school board on this and that, that's another issue.
Correct, right, 'cause you can't...
But what it does is, is that, is that you take the difference between the tax revenue that you're taking, that you have today versus, this is property tax revenue, versus the property tax revenue that's created as a result of development. In that delta, you're able to go out and finance bonds to do improvements, which would be either roads, could be sewers, just whatever, development improvements in order to enhance the development of property.
In that area.
In that area.
So it's not new taxes, a bond addition, right?
Is it a tax abatement?
No.
No.
What you're doing is you're taking that delta, in other words, what you're doing is you're improving, you're putting a whole new improvements out there in an area that has very low tax base, you're increasing the tax base as a result of that, but you're taking that tax base difference, that delta, and using that to source the funding of bonds in order to make infrastructure improvements.
For a specific period of time, right?
And who pays off those bonds, the city or the developer?
No, 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 the TAD, the TAD pays it off.
Well, it's for future increase, I mean, the benefit to the city is the future increase in the...
In property tax.
It's like a loan.
And the other thing is too, is outside of that geographic area where there are improvements, the increase in valuation spreads out to beyond the boundaries and all, you know, boats rise at a time, so that we will get reevaluations of all properties because they're next to a more improved area, a highly valued area.
And are there limitations? Can they, is it, is it infrastructure, or is it, is it parks, is it buildings, what can those, what can those...
It can be parking, it can be where we did before was actually reconfiguring streets, or to add water, sewer, whatever additional infrastructure that's needed to support the fact that development is coming in. It would be more, it would be more of using an asset the government would otherwise have.
And once the bonds are retired, would the TAD, would the...
It can still stay there, I mean, you can use it in on other areas unless you, unless you completely develop the area, you don't need it, it just goes away.
I'm just thinking about, so you're freezing the sort of the tax assessment at that period of time, and that delta is what you're gonna be using to retire bond debt? But then, once the bond's retired, where does that delta go at that point?
In your pocket, into the general revenue.
That's when, that's when the city begins to realize the value of the infrastructure investment.
So are you using that added tax revenue to pay off that bond? I'm just confused as to where the money comes from.
It comes from the additional tax revenue.
If, if you have, if you're raising taxes? No, 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 if you have a blighted property that's paying ten dollars in taxes, you redevelop it, and the increased value of that redevelopment is paying twenty dollars in taxes, you can take that ten dollars between ten and twenty and pledge it toward bonds to provide infrastructure.
Which can give you a hundred dollars in pledge.
Yeah, in that area, so...
What are disaster stories? Where they've got...
It's been overused at Atlanta's time under criticism.
That would, you know, probably that would be a good thing for Earl Taylor to talk about, because he's done a lot of those disasters. When I dealt with one, the disaster was the economy killed it, and it never got done.
Right.
So...
Smurthers had one with, what was their experience that you can remember?
They had one in a corner near City Hall in the Convent back, and it still hasn't developed yet.
That's the one that's six tonne dollar rock tracks, that's got all the columns, but...
They actually had two of the Belmont, the Belmont Hills area, it didn't develop, and then also the Junker Plaza area that didn't develop. They, it's very time consuming to get, you know, you open a meeting and do it on Thursday.
So who's, is there a separate authority for this, or is it developer's authority? Or just us?
And we just have, we find the place, the area that needs to...
We define the area that needs to be...
That helps, a common plan and training, people will help on that.
Are there requirements for what the area has to have in order to be considered? I mean, like the poverty rate or something like that?
No.
No, just the development potential?
The, if you look at the, that area, College Park, you know, College Park created convention center, and they did all those hotels and offices, and they actually ran the airport line over there to where they knew the rental cars, that was, that was partially done through a TAD also. So, I mean, that's, that can show you what a TAD is.
My memory was that some of the criticism in Atlanta, maybe it wasn't a TAD, maybe it was one of these other vehicles, but like, for instance, the mansion on Peachtree was given some kind of a tax abatement or a TAD, and, and the criticism was that a high-end, you know, luxury property on Peachtree didn't need a TAD, which is designed originally for blighted or underdeveloped areas. And it, because it is lost revenue that the city would have had if the developer would have shouldered all the costs.
That was different. That was done through, that would have been done through the Ford County Development Board, which in effect, then they, they're able to do the abatement for a period of years, but then it comes back up, all of that area over on Buckhead on Running Road is under those, those types of arrangements, but that's through an authority, that wasn't the city.
And it's just down Brookhaven, I mean, it's the same deal.
Just a tax payment.
It's a tax, this is not a tax abatement, in effect.
They pay the taxes.
They're still paying the taxes, they're paying the taxes based on the fair market value of the property. No, no, it's, it allows us to, again, if the property...
Your development without having to necessarily go to a bank to do it, right?
Us going to a bank to, again, if the property, a lot of Beaufort Highway is worth ten dollars, you come in and you build a new something there that the county legislature says now the values, the taxes are worth twenty dollars, we can, we can capture that ten dollar difference and pledge it towards bond...
Reduction.
Bond funding, you know, or use that to support, so, so the property owner pays his, pays his taxes as, as he would, you know, day in and day out, or as he would normally, we collect ten dollars and we use the other ten dollars to pay off the bonds.
So it's just, it's just like your increase in property, your home assessment, when your home rise and value, the difference from where it was a year ago and where it is later, that, that difference is what they use to...
Yeah.
But that's money the city otherwise would have had.
That's correct.
If the TAD wasn't in place, so it's lost revenue for...
Well, no, it's a source of financing.
We still got the ten dollars.
That the city may, you know, would have otherwise wanted to do.
It's not lost, we're still getting what we were getting before.
I know, but if a private developer came in and just did it, and it went from ten to twenty, the city would accrue that, that money as opposed to paying it off the bond.
But on the other side, this developer may not come.
It may not have ever happened.
So it's kickstarting, it may not come. And so I can see where Susan said, it can take a while to do that.
And you may have to start paying off the bonds before you generated that, that additional property tax, right?
Well, no, I think you have to, the bond would induce it to the property taxes, that's what I think.
Oh, I don't think so.
No, no.
You need to start paying off the bonds, that's the downside.
At the point in time that you're ready to finance, you're ready to do improvements is the time to do the bond. There is a lag between the time that you do the improvements and that these property taxes are what, because the improvements are usually a condition of their ability to develop.
And you'd assess the property a year after it's helped.
You've gotta be sure of that.
The question for the legislative package, this is just giving us the authority to do a TAD? We don't need to define any area...
Right, but it will allow the authority to get a referendum.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, next term limits.
Yeah, if you have the board. My, my take on term limits is, I would like to have us have a consensus on this. We've talked a little bit about why I believe it's a good idea. You know, I originally said two years, two full terms, just like the mayor's seat has, I'm willing to concede if it gets consensus to do, to do three full terms, I'm fine with that too, so. You know, I know Joe's been, you know, campaigned on it.
I campaigned on it, my original intent was two terms, as Bates just suggested, it's negotiable, but I don't think that this should be a position that should go on indefinitely. I don't think that, that is healthy. I think you need to have turn in people, I think you need to do it, where it's, if you can't do this job in these twelve years, then shame on you.
Well, and also, if you're doing a really good job in the council seat, and you run for two full terms, take the mayor's spot for another two full terms, you know? I mean, the mayor's gonna be rolling off. It doesn't mean necessarily that people have to leave if they're doing a good job. I can understand how constituents, if they've got somebody good in office and they wanna keep them in office, you wanna keep them there, but I think the downside risk of getting too much ingrained power in one council seat is why it's important. You know, I think certainly I've been shown that we've got a pretty informed electorate in Brookhaven, wants to get involved in every district, to have...
And I think for that reason, you know, my, my crystal ball's not, it's fairly cloudy when it comes to what future council members are gonna do, but I think your statement right there is the reason why I'm not necessarily in support of it. Thinking back to conversations with Mike Jacobs, you know, he did the term limit to two reasons, one is the districts are relatively small, and it doesn't take a whole lot of votes to vote somebody out, and if you do have a very educated electorate, then if you're not doing the job you're supposed to be doing, then you're gonna be voted out. Second of all, you know, and again, I'm using his words, is that there's not necessarily an endless source of people that will step up to run. And so I, you know, while I don't necessarily disagree with you about the fact that, you know, we start accumulating power over time, I would hope that the individual who's in that office understands how to control that and how to not use that to advantage as a detriment to the city, but, you know, again, we do have an educated electorate, and we do have a relatively small district, and it doesn't take a whole lot to get somebody out of office if, if there's a reason why they should or should not be there.
Ted Kennedy had a chapter with him in East State Office for... I don't know, I'm not hot about it, I'm in favor of it, three terms, I'm like a good compromise, but it's really up to, this really affects y'all, so...
Rebecca?
I really wanna respect Mike Jacobs on this, because in my mind, he's kind of the father of our city, and I think he put a lot of thought into this charter, studied a lot of other charters, didn't, I mean, Jim is right, you know, he had some definite thoughts about this, and he thought we didn't need that. And I agree with Jim, I think, I think our electorate will boot us out if we're not doing the job, and, and again, you know, I think we, if you don't wanna, you know, you personally don't think you ought to be in more than two terms, then don't run, you know? I think there's ways to limit it without imposing it in our charter, and again, out of respect to Mike, I would say, I'm not okay to run.
Well, here's the, it's, it's not so much for the people who are doing a good job, it's, it's, look at the Kappa County School Board, you've got, you've got people who were elected year after year after year and doing a horrible job, and they were doing it because they were getting, you know, they were pulling in what they wanted for their district, not thinking the city wanted. You know, that's where you get ingrained power, and a long-term player has the ability, I think, to, you know, in the worst-case scenario, an extended period of time... I think, to, you know, in a worst-case scenario, an extended period of time in a council seat, you can accrue power and you're just going to be thinking about, I'm getting power from my people because they're going to get me reelected. And I think that that's a, that's a worst-case scenario that term limits eliminates.
I don't think, I don't think it's fair to use the, to use the example you did because I think, you know, as you have said, we have a much more educated populace than a lot of the districts that are voting on the Cat County School Board members and, you know, I think we need to look specifically at what we're seeing in Brookhaven, not what we're seeing beyond because this is about the elected officials in Brookhaven. And I think that at the end of the day, we're going to have some people step up, we're going to have some spirited elections if people don't feel like the jobs, jobs need done. And also, you know, we're also saying that we're making the assumption that there will be future problems with either this council or later councils, that we just pull the rug out of the mother and let, you know, that we're smart enough to understand that we're just going to cut them off rather than putting that decision with the voters.
Remember too, that we will have a charter commission, what at first, at the end of five years, that will really come back and review our charter, Citizen Committee. I think if there's sentiment there, I mean, just having watched Dunwoody go through theirs, they looked, they scrutinized every line and came up with a lot of different ideas and get those changes go before the legislature this year. So, you know, we can also change in subsequent years too, but as I sit there today, I'm against it.
Two to two. This is a difficult proposition. Well, I mean, I, you know, I understand what the argument is against it. I think that we've done a phenomenal, you know, if you look at the snapshot time we're in today, you'd love for all of this elected office this day in perpetuity.
I'll be gone before y'all's, whatever comes up.
But, but the reality is, you know, I just, I want to protect those future citizens because when you get, I believe that when you get people in there for, for a long time, it becomes too easy for a politician to say, I'm going to do whatever I can to get my votes from my district so that I don't get, you know, I don't, I'm going to deliver all of my efforts to my district rather than thinking citywide in the best interest of the city because I'm going to ensure my reelection.
You're making your argument for there not to be a term limit for the mayor.
No, well, I think that's why, that's the argument why term limits make sense to me. Because you're doing, it is a public service. It's not a career. It's not something where, I mean, politics may be a career, but I think that this is a public service and having new people step up to the plate off of public service is a good thing for the city as a whole.
I guess I can support it under the simple premise that somewhere down the line, there's going to be people that have less than true intentions in their heart when they're serving in this position and, you know, at this point, call me naive, but I'd like to think that the people that are elected by the citizens do have a certain sense of duty that keeps them on the straight and narrow. Yes, there are exceptions to that, but I'd rather look at the, at the other side of that and to assume that there are going to be problems, I'm not willing to accept that. You know, I think this is also something we can keep, that can be put off. Obviously, we're not, none of us are in a position where this is going to affect us. So, you know, I think this is a decision I agree with Rebecca that, you know, we've been five years out when we do the charter commission. This is, you know, it's still not going to be something that will affect any one of us on the, on the board one way or the current council one way or the other, but I just, maybe I have too much faith in the citizens, maybe I feel like they are more educated than other districts, but at this point, I'd like to, well, leave it in their hands rather than us making an arbitrary decision at this point.
So you want to transmit a tech amendment that says there's no term limit on mayor?
No, we're talking about, we're talking about council.
I'm not, but you're saying, are you for the term limit for mayor?
Yes.
Well, see, what's the rationale there is the term limit for mayor and not the council members?
I think, I think the mayor has a much broader role in the city and I do think that it is good to bring in fresh, and, you know, that may be a council person, but, you know, I think the council person...
But what about respecting the citizens and what you were just saying about their elected?
And again, I'm respecting the charter as much as I'm respecting the citizens and I'd like to, my vote is to keep the charter the way it is.
Well, just, you know, I, to bring it down to Brookhaven, so, I have seen how neighborhood associations have had a great presence that, that gain power and really drive too much of the process and, and it becomes too difficult to change, you know, it requires sort of a revolution of a neighborhood association to get a mass of people to make that change happen. I don't want our city council to get to that point where we have to have a revolution to enact some sort of positive change in our city. That's why I think that certainly giving twelve years to an individual to make something positive happen, that's a heck of a lot of time to do for the city. And then possibly, if they want to move up to the next leadership position, they go for another eight years in a mayor position. It's twenty full years of public service to the city of Brookhaven. I, that's, that's great. If they want to take four years off or possibly with a rollover term, maybe they just take two years off and go back to the council seat. To me, I don't think it eliminates the issue of having good elected representatives, but it does eliminate the issue of having people who might get too much entrenched power to really be representing the city as, you know, as a whole.
I think the brilliant move in our charter was having the, I've said this, is having the four-member council. I mean, when you talk about the talent pool issue, I mean, some cities, you know, six, seven, they have seven elected officials and they're half our size or quarter our size. I think that we have plenty of talent in Brookhaven. I'm not ever worried about maybe qualified candidates in the future for five elected positions out of the city of 50,000. I think that's, I think we're, that's not going to be a problem.
I'd be, I'd be in favor of supporting Rebecca on postponing this until the five-year commission. Again, it's not affecting any of us. It's not going to, you know, at that point, there's still plenty of time. We do like to go with term limits, whether they're two or three or four or whatever the number is, but I'd like to postpone this until we have a chance to, to see how we operate and also see what, see what changes are needed at that point.
Can I make a request or official motion?
This is a work session, a motion. But so how, I mean, how does it work if we just got consensus on rec authority, rec on TAD and there's three, two on term limits, is that, how does that, how does that work?
Well, I mean, this is a work session. I mean, you can certainly at the next, next meeting, put it on.
But this will be after the legislative session starts, the next meeting?
Well, the good thing about local legislation is we can still do that, draw the second meeting.
Yeah, that's a good... How about, how about we do this, how about we put it on a maybe list and talk to local legis, local delegation and see what they're...
They'll do it, we, whatever they recommend. I think it should be all, they should have it on. And I think they're, and they will take it, I mean, it'll be, it won't pass first day or first week, so if it's in there, we can have it removed.
I would hope because there's not a consensus, it stays on.
Well, the issue is from the public perception stand, standard, I don't see how we sell, you know, term limits on mayor and not on council. I mean, let's have some consistency across the board here. I mean, that's unfair, I think, and especially in a weak mayor system to...
Yeah, but we found out that the mayor's a lot stronger than...
The mayor has a whole lot more power than we do.
Yeah.
Well, really, I...
You appoint everybody, you get to, you know, you sign everything, you know.
You get to...
You get to...
You can hold your confirmation.
Again, I would hope because there's not consensus that we don't, that we don't move forward at this time.
Well, it's, you know, these issues are going to be hard to ever get consensus, 100% consensus on an issue like this. I don't think a lot will happen.
I think, I think it needs to be transmitted and we take a vote.
Well, you know, you, I think you're making up your list and then, you know, and then vote on everything.
After the session starts.
And so now, somebody who wants term limits on the list, so let's, you know, put it, start a regular meeting where it's...
We'll put it together.
Session starts at 13:00.
We'll put it together and we'll put that on the agenda.
I think they're, I mean, even if you're opposed to, I think the compromise of three terms would be you don't want to transmit a two term.
I mean, quite frankly, I'm not sure I'll, I'll run for reelection, period, you know. They keep hanging up my face in those pink copy ads, I may think twice about it, but... So, I mean, I, I think I can, I can live at my own terms, but, you know.
Yeah, and that's it. I mean, I'd rather speak for myself than the future and, but we'll see where we go.
People find out how much fun this job is, if there'll be any, how much time it is.
Take a snapshot this week.
All the abuse you take.
Now, where's the legislative item off on the pay increase for us all? Where's that one?
Well...
That's a joke.
Then next time, Mr. Goebbels...
The voting for the four percent, the three and a half, what they probably increase for you, so.
Before, before going to the second session, there was one other item that we, actually when we, when we approved the 2013 budget, we had asked for ways to provide some flexibility with regard to both the homestead exemption and also the property tax.
Oh, yeah.
With allowing us to either increase or decrease or, you know, right now the charter is specific on the homestead, it's also specific, but, you know, allowing us to do, for instance, have done what he does by having a lesser military for residential homestead or the flip side is by increasing the homestead exemption for, you know, obviously for residential properties. So being able to have that flexibility in our charter so that we could do one or the other or both, which is, are such that we can...
Is it just through the homestead exemption and not, because I'm not seeing where a military is very...
What Dunwoody does is, is in their charter that says one mill of the city military will be used to reduce property tax. So in effect, their military is 2.75, but homeowners are really charged 1.75.
Yeah, so, yeah, so they have a, exactly, or other places, they will increase the homestead exemption to sort of do the same thing.
To me, that's a more flexible way. I mean, if we got hit, you know, another plane hits building tomorrow and we go between some global economic thing, I'd rather have that ability to adjust the homestead exemption as opposed to, you know, taking a whole village.
So are you, are you talking about that, that the legislation would give that flexibility to amend the charter?
To let us raise the...
Yeah, and also...
Right now it's 30,000.
Twenty, twenty.
Twenty.
And that also could be used, for instance, somebody was talking about elderly, yeah, senior citizens, you know, we can, we can allow them to have a larger homestead exemption, which would offset them. So that gives us the flexibility to either decrease the property tax rate or increase the homestead exemption for...
Which only, which only goes to homeowners.
Exactly, yeah. You have to have, you have to have a homestead exemption in place to receive this, then go to business, then go to rentals. It only goes to those that have a homestead exemption in place.
Okay. Just so I can be sure in my hearing, not only flexibility on homestead exemption, but also to include and as well, senior citizens.
That would be, that would give you flexibility.
So that's all, okay.
These are lower categories.
This directly impacts the suggestion I made to do a mid-year term review next year to offset the educational portion of the tax.
This would allow us to do that.
So we could do internally, right?
Yeah.
Not very much in favor of that.
Yeah, this would allow us to do that, again, going up and down.
And then we'd set like, say anybody 65 or over, anybody in retirement, so they're not penalized with that.
You're talking about being penalized with the school portion of the tax. That's a huge chunk.
But we don't have a portion of the school tax and then it goes straight to the, it's sixty, so.
Right, but we adopted the Cabs exemptions, which is a means-tested exemption and it's pretty low. I think you've got to make, what is it, less than 35,000 of any kind of income?
Well, I think...
Oh, yeah. Now, Shandley, if you're 65 and over, you are exempt from city taxes. So, I mean, you know, there's other things.
I think exempt from city taxes would help offset what they're paying for them.
Yeah, I, in theory, I'm in favor of this. I just want to see the numbers before we...
All we're doing is giving us a mechanism, a better tool.
Yeah, just like, just like a direct authority, we're just giving ourselves the option to have it available.
But, but is it possible for us to start seeing an analysis of what-if scenarios of if we do some of these things?
Bring us by and just...
That would be helpful. Or I like the idea of helping us each citizen on the tax break, but I think to compare it to Dunwoody, Dunwoody's residential commercial ratio is...
Well, they have so much more commercial than we do.
It's pretty different than ours.
Well, I don't know, it's 30, 40.
So we're just, just the homestead exemption tool. I've got to leave and I'm there here, so we got to...
Homestead and tax and, and I think Joe's point, you know, this is something we look to, the mid-year adjustment to, if we decide to do it this year at all, that's...
We have time to put these analyses together. We're not going to be pressed by...
Okay, but I'm just looking, I'm going to compare it to other cities. I'll look at Dunwoody and Shandley, but this is only for homestead exemption, the ability to rise, to increase or lower it, whichever way you want to go.
Homestead exemption, also the tax rate, the military, excuse me.
But we already have, we already said that right here.
He's talking about separating the homestead from the business.
Yeah, said a different one, yeah, said a different one.
A differential.
We can choose to do one or the other.
Yeah, so in other words, we could have two military rates, we could have a homestead military rate, we could have a general military rate.
We have the ground rules, obviously, so.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, you know, that...
Which is what Dunwoody does.
And it's what, it's a lot of what Cat County used to do. I mean, they've got basically a separate tax rate for their commercial businesses and their homes.
Because they don't.
We got a homestead exemption.
Exactly, and you get a host exemption.
And they don't, so that's what I'm saying, basically it's a different tax.
Yeah, but it, but it still, it starts with the same tax rate, it's just you get the credit to reduce your out-of-pocket costs.
Maria, you could be talking to Mike Jacobs about these before.
Yeah, I'll reach out to him, but what I want to do though is I want to put the package together for you all. One, I want to give you more information about the TADs, so you understand that, the rec authority, the hotel motel tax, so you'll have, you'll have the background on each of these, but we'll prepare for the January, the first meeting in January, the 14th, we'll have an item on the agenda for the legislative package.
So, or one more. So before we actually move ahead, you're going to Google from us that what we're sending us is what we read?
Yes.
And then just by way of email, we can say, yeah, please proceed.
Well, my plan is to put it all together in this package, which will give you the background data on each of these items, you know, the scenarios that Bonner will put together on homestead and senior citizens tax and all of that, and then what a TAD is, what the hotel motel tax is, you know, just the background, just so you have it, so that's there. And, but we will prepare a transmittal resolution and that will be the agenda item to transmit a legislative package to include and it'll be listed.
What about the border?
So, one more question about downtown of the Ballin' Athletic and Renaissance act issues. Are these issues that need to be dealt with unless, so we can enact it down the...
Correct.
All right. Does Renaissance require a resolution on our part? Do we want to?
I don't believe it will require that, but there are these...
I think GNA has requested, hasn't it?
Yeah. Oh, you're talking about to support the bill. Oh, yes, yes, absolutely. I'm sorry, I thought she meant, do we have to do something formal to engage, to be involved in when it is approved? No, I'm sorry.
All right.
We will do a resolution and put that on the agenda, just like we did...
This is part of legislative, it's not a package of this.
Correct.
Do we need to do a motion to go on executive session? Okay, a motion.
I have a motion. I go into executive session to discuss the real standing between legal.
Segment.
Discussion. I'll favor executive session, send a motion by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.